Okay, Ron.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 13, 2019 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, there are three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to each agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a comment card and turn it in to our city clerk, to my right here. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit and have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your comment cards to your city, to the city clerk now. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Before I call, or I'll call agenda item number one, but before Sudi, have you read it out? Just point of order, Ken, before we get started, and Steve, if I can have your take along with the council on the process here. It probably makes sense to take public comment if we have some first, and then as the applicant, I say applicant, or the business owner, obviously they'll, I think, have filled out a public comment card, it looked like, but if there's, I'm assuming we'd handle just like any other meeting, if there's some follow-up questions or comments or whatnot, I assume that the business owners can come back up and answer questions or...
Right, so this is a work session, Adam. This is not subject to all of sort of the procedural protocols of a public hearing. The main thing that needs to occur here is that this is a meaningful event for the council and the audience members. So if you want to ask questions and have people come up and ask questions at a work session, you can do that truly to your heart's content. There's no limitation on that.
Okay, all right. Is council okay with having public comment at the beginning of the, Sudi, I'll ask if you'll sound the agenda item number one.
Our first item this evening is discussion of the six-month assessment and status report by staff, the applicant, and stakeholders related to the experience associated with the operation of Matilda's outdoor music venue at 8:50 and 8:75 Hickory Flat Road pursuant to condition 5(c) of that use permit issued by the City of Milton on June 19, 2018, and by direction from council on January 14, 2019.
Okay, before we hear this item, Councilmember Bentley has a comment.
Yeah, I remain recused on this special use permit from official council discussions and decisions, so I'll excuse myself.
And... Councilmember Bentley, if you don't mind, I think for this, I would request you stay at the table, just because we still have a quorum in attendance, we do. Even if you're recused, you're still part of that quorum, and so I think that would be better. So thank you and forgive me for having to...
Just can't say anything. And I would, you know, if Steve, I'll ask Steve if you want to say anything to start, and then we'll take public comment.
Good evening, council. So as Sudi stated, this is the follow-up from the January meeting for the six-month review. As part of that review, council had directed that we get the general experience from a staff perspective, from the community's perspective, and from the applicant's perspective, and hence, I think we have all here represented. From the staff perspective, the original concerns that were brought up back in June of 2018 included increased traffic, issues associated with parking, not only at the location, but in other surrounding areas, including the other corners, pedestrian safety issues and noise. The only issues that we were, that we've dealt with since the start, the first event, which I believe was on May 4 of 2019, was associated with complaints of noise. We've, they've come in in a variety of manners. You have received emails, the staff has received emails, and we have received calls for service through the police department. I have general numbers of what we're looking at. Through the season, we had 13 instances where the police officers were there, eight of which were as a result of calls from citizens, citizens, citizens. Now, that does not mean that only eight people called. That means we were there eight times. There could be an occurrence where we received multiple calls, but only one caller will get, it'll only get logged as one call, and five others for where the police responded as a self-initiated call. I could tell you that from the email perspective, we, they actually came in in a flurry. Most of the time, we did not receive emails except from a few people that we've been communicating with regularly from the surrounding communities. But I could say that on the, looks like what was Memorial Day weekend, which was the, I think the show was the 25th, we received more emails than normal, and from people that we hadn't heard from other times. So I have to assume that the event on the 25th was probably louder or redirected in a manner that, that we hadn't had before or since. And most of those complaints appeared to come in from the Killian Manor neighborhood. Beyond that, we don't have much information to share with you regarding complaints. We've also had emails supporting Matilda's, or some of it was associated with the, with the zoning modification that was done in September, but generally, that's the experience we've been having. We've had no trouble with the litter, no trouble with the parking, no trouble with traffic or pedestrians, just some of the issues we've been dealing with, some of the neighbors with complaints of noise at their homes.
Okay. And again, I'm sure after public comment, any questions unless you've got something right now, but for our staff. Sudi, if you'll please call the first speaker.
Okay. The rules do permit 10 minutes per item or two minutes per person? Do we want to stay with that two minutes? I've got three, four, five, six cards and one to read in the record.
Okay.
So seven.
I'm going to say at this point, we'll leave it, and then if we need to add, because if someone didn't take a full two minutes, there may be enough time.
Okay. Our first speaker is Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, from Brumiller Reese &amp; Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I'm here tonight, the I am a paid employee of the applicant, so, but in this particular case, I just wanted to try to stay with the facts. There was only one time that a third-party sound specialist took readings, and those readings, I'm sure you've gone through, show the sound level at Bream Ridge neighborhood at 48. The sound readings at the property line were the same or very close to the same on all the other readings that we've been reported from the police. So we would have to extrapolate that it's probably going to be about the same. Just to give you from some perspective, the noise level of a 48 is between a bird call, a conversation at home, a computer, a refrigerator, a vacuum cleaner, a babbling brook. These are all, I mean, I've got four examples, so I just wanted to try to lend a little bit of clarity to that. So thank you for your time.
And for the record, Sudi, I believe we've got Councilmember Cookley is on the line.
Yes, we do, she is.
Okay. Councilmember Cookley, are you participating by phone?
I am. I'm just trying to keep it muted, so give me a second or two if you call on me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, can we identify where Councilmember Cookley is purposes of the act?
Yeah. Councilmember Cookley, can, where, what location are you at? Where are you?
Raleigh-Durham Airport.
Sure. Thank you.
Raleigh-Durham Airport.
Okay, thank you. I think just for clarification, Ken, I think if you call in, you have to be a certain number of miles away.
You have to be ill or you have to be out of the jurisdiction, which means the City of Milton, and she most assuredly is.
Okay, all right. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Curtis Mills.
My name is Curtis Mills. I live at 16355 Birmingham Highway in Milton. I had prepared some summary background points that I thought might be helpful. I don't know if it's two minutes worth, and I'm burning that now. Happy to try to burn through that. I think it'll be helpful up to you.
Sure, you can go ahead and start, and then we'll address it.
All right. And I assume there'll be Q and A after this, being a work session, I don't know. A couple of background facts. The three plus or minus acres between Matilda's and Hickory Flat is unrestricted C1 zoning. Unlike the southeast, northeast, and southwest corners, which all are restricted, anything could be on those front handful of acres. A Waffle House, another gas station, anything. Right now, it's basically dedicated to occasional parking once a week, six months a year. Just want to point that out, and it's certainly not the highest economic value, and that likely would not fit with the community. Another little factoid, any C1 entity in the Birmingham crossroads areas on any corner, there may be some restrictions on type of business, could have a live music venue associated with their business, and the decibel limit would be 85. Not our 75, not the 70, you reduced it to, just pointing that out. If there's a restaurant in the future, or seven acre, if Matilda's left, and my view is, from a lot of feedback, that it's, Matilda's is viewed as a, as an asset in the community by...
Two minutes, says Alamsd.
True. Again, I would, I was suggesting, if council differs, that's fine, too, that maybe we do have sensitive work session time for back and forth, so if we want to let everybody speak, there are two minutes, and then if we need to add time or questions, if you're okay with that.
Whatever you all want.
You guys okay with that? All right, maybe pertinent, so, okay, if you please call the next person.
Next speaker is Kevin Crow.
Good evening, Kevin Crow, 1153 Bream Drive, Milton, Georgia. Speaking on behalf of the Bream Ridge Home Winners Association. I'll get right to it. I've said it before, I'll say it again. We are supportive of Matilda's as it is right now incorporated, except for one main issue, which is the noise level. So we are in the "turn it down, please," not "shut it down." We have, we're not here on any other issues. We've, I've emailed the data, so I'm not going to go through that right now, of how we have formulated and come to our conclusion. What we're asking for is a reduction to the noise level to 65 decibels peak, not continuous peak. There's a big difference between peak and continuous. We came to that conclusion over four months and attending 14 concerts and taking readings at all of those and providing feedback to the operators, who she's, Ms. Potter's been great to work with. Our other concern is what happens after Matilda's leaves and the Potters leave? Because this special use permit is not tied specifically to Matilda's. It's tied to something like Matilda's, so we don't have the protection there. Also, as a neighborhood, we are really concerned why we were not giving the types of protections and considerations as a Little River event facility. Those have much tighter controls for sound levels at the property line than this facility, and it's, and Matilda's is in a residential area. So again, we're not asking for anything other than some consideration and some protections from the city on this point. As far as the sound study, I think that's a great point. At no point in that sound study did it ever say what the decibel readings were at the property line when they took their decibel readings out in the areas. We have no idea what was going on at Matilda's when those readings were done outside. I think that's an important fact that should be considered and taken into account as well. When the police officers were there, they even commented, they thought it was louder than the decibel readings they'd had in our neighborhood, which I thought was very telling. So I'm out of time, I'll move on. Thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you. So if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Judy Byrds.
Hi, Judy Byrds, 1165 Bream Drive, here in Milton. Thank you for your continued effort to attempt to make Matilda's music venue an experience that will work both for the audience and the nearby neighbors. One issue remains, the appropriate limit on the sound, and notice I don't call it noise, it's music, I call it sound, the sound at the property line so that we nearby residents will not hear the music in our homes. We have worked diligently with, as a collective in our neighborhood, to work with city staff, with the police, and with Ms. Potter to try to find this limit. I've discussed, Mary Jane and I are now Facebook friends, we've talked so much about this. What we have found is if the sound at the property line, well behind the audience, is kept below 65 decibels peak, we do not hear the music in our homes. We hear it outside, we will have to hear it if we're out on our fire pits, but that 65 peaks appears to be consistently the level that when it is exceeded, it intrudes into our four-sided brick homes. Ms. Potter has been able to operate below 65 peak during most of the concerts. She has been willing to work with us, but we remain concerned that this permit has been issued in perpetuity, tied only to a Matilda-like experience. I attached the ordinances in my emails to you early today. We just want the legal protections that the city council has the right and power to determine to protect us as nearby resident. The lowering of to 75 decibels continuous is not adequate protection for our quality of life. Please consider adjusting the limit to 65 decibels peak in a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Tara Chambers.
Hi, I'm Tara Chambers. I live at 2784 Sonoma Lee Way, Milton, Georgia. I moved, what I'm going to talk about more is, I feel like, lessons I've learned from living here in Milton. I moved here about 17 years ago, and when I moved here to the Hermitage, I'm in the Highway 9 corridor, there was a cow farm where Cambridge High School is, Mrs. Kirby's Farm, Hopewell Middle School, Cambridge, Hopewell Middle School, Cogburn Woods wasn't here yet. I now live across the street from Hopewell Middle School. I have a monstrosity of a daycare center right behind my home. There are things that we fought against, so hard against, only to have something worse that came in. And I just feel like what I'm watching happen out here is something that I think is a really great option, something that brings character to Milton. Yes, is there noise? Absolutely. But it can be worse, that I live hearing football games, hearing children in a daycare. I can't even do conference calls on Mondays from my home anymore because of the leaf blowers of all the commercial area around me. My point is just Milton has changed. I used to live in a very quiet Milton. I've adapted. I still love Milton. I love where I am, but I had to change, we had to change what was acceptable and what wasn't. So what I'm concerned is we're going to fight so hard to force Matilda's out by not letting the volume be what a venue like that should be, that we're going to end up with something even worse. And we don't need more car washes, more nail salons, more of those businesses that are all over the place. We want Milton to be special, and this is the kind of business that I just wish we'd stop arguing over this. I get it, you don't want to be disturbed in our homes. That's what we all wanted. That's not realistic, though. That is commercial land. It will be commercial. It will be something. We've got to start thinking, what could it be other than Milda's that could be worse, Matilda's that could be worse? Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mary Potter. Did you want to speak?
I'll just wait, two questions.
Okay. And I do have one public comment to read into the record, and this is from Jeff Beardsley, who has presented me with an affidavit. He is out of the jurisdiction this evening. He lives at 1051 Bream Drive, Milton, Georgia, and he says, "I would like to reiterate my concern that the maximum decibel level allowed for Matilda's concerts should be lowered from the current standard. The decibel level at the most recent concerts were set at much lower levels than what is allowed. The ranges at the property line were around 60 decibels peak. Unless this is set by regulation, there is nothing to prevent the concerts in the future from exceeding this level. Now that an acceptable decibel level has been found, that both sides can agree to please put measures in place to avoid future issues. Thank you for your time." And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Sudi. I have a question for Ken real quick before we get started with discussion, both on the purpose of this work session, and you may have in front of you the, the item, the, you know, the use, the use permit shall return to the council the next work session, six months from today's date, June 19, 2018. Obviously, that was moved because the start date was different. For assessment and status by the staff, the applicant, and stakeholders to discuss the results and experience of the use permit with the council. And based on some of the comments we've gotten so far on sound and all, legally, if you could just address, you know, where we are with the council, if, if we wanted to change something legally, what the process would be?
All right, so, well, again, it's difficult for me to articulate perfectly what the purpose of was with respect to this condition, because every council member may have had something different in their mind. So the best sort of expression of what the intent of a collective body is, is the literal language of the, of the condition they addressed themselves or they enacted themselves. And so the condition is exactly what it says it is, is it an opportunity to hear about the experience of not only the stakeholders, not only the residents and staff with respect to this venue since it has been operational? You may recall that when the council originally adopted this use permit, it, there was a longer period of ramp-up than we thought, so in, at the first six-month iteration, we really weren't in a position to be able to have this sort of a, of a work session because there had not been six months of experience with it. So the purpose now is to hear that experience, hear from staff, hear from the stakeholders, which we're doing, and then the council has options. There is no mandatory action the council has to take this evening at all. The council has the option of hearing the concerns and taking no action, hearing the favorable reports as well as the negative reports, taking no action. The council could set another perhaps discussion or hearing in some future date if they want to revisit it. The council can't take action to change the DB level tonight, or anything with respect to the use permit. Okay, that's in the form of a zoning. A use permit is a variant of the zoning enactments of the council, and so if the council wants to take on that, two things either have to happen. One, the council would have to incentivize or see if the property owner themselves wanted to come in and apply for a change of conditions, which they may or may not want to do. And if they don't want to do that, the council does have the authority to initiate its own change of conditions, but I will simply caution the council that that does in fact set up a procedure, and that does sort of bring to the forefront all of the various rights of the interested parties to include the property owners. But I think at this point, the best thing the council can do is obviously just become informed. At the end of the day, my read of that condition is, is that you wanted data, you wanted... You wanted information at the end of six months of experience. And then if you feel that anything needs to be done, you can perhaps give that direction at some point. But I will just need to advise you then of what the legal ramifications of that are once you tell me what in fact the council wants to do. But Mr. Mayor, just be mindful, the council could hear all of this tonight and say, you know, we're happy with it where it is, and we don't feel like anything else needs to occur. Or you may have a difference of opinion on that. But I do think this is just an opportunity for a transparent opportunity for data, for data collection.
Okay. And I'll just kind of open up. The council has questions of either applicant or staff or any other discussion.
Steve, we have a... We've had some comparison items as far as that are out in the community, like Little River, for example. And people talk about the DB level being 45 at Little River, right? And that was primarily because Valmont was a subdivision that was at least another 50, 60 feet across the fence line, across the road in that sense. As we looked at this particular piece of property, we originally set it in the '80s because the property line was right next to the stage. Is that right? I mean, you know, we had a house right behind the stage originally. We were looking at the whole thing as a conference, essentially. We didn't section off a corner of it and say, "We need this level at this section and this level at this section." It was all everywhere. Is that correct?
If I recall correctly, the original staff recommendation was for 85 DBA, which would have been in line with the commercial limit for music.
Right. Which affected every single inch of the property line.
It would have been the entire perimeter of the property line.
Right. So as we look at the comparisons that we have here, is there anything in our code that would be able to allow us to section off part of that property line to make a requirement for a DB level at that side? Maybe like if we did the east side needs to be at a 65 as they're talking about or whatever. Cannot even be done legally if we wanted to make that in our codes?
You would have to do what Ken was suggesting. We would have to... Correct me if I'm wrong. We would have to take a zoning action to modify the zoning conditions.
Right.
That's correct.
Right. So then that would involve a whole... Would that be a overlay total or just for that section? How would that work in particular?
Yeah, there's really not a limited zoning action. It would be the full, you know, panoply of zoning requirements. So a public hearing, staff report, staff analysis, you know, the whole process.
But that would be the overlay of all corners of that intersection essentially? Or can we isolate it to just this particular piece of property?
Well, the ultimate relief would be isolated to this portion of the quadrant.
Okay. I do have a question for Curtis and Mary Jane, just to ask if you guys want to come on up. So thanks for coming. So what I'm hearing out there is that obviously we have, you know, music and the experience has hopefully been positive, because I think the intent from the council when we did this was to have an option here that would be good. I think that we've, you know, had some, you know, growing pains as we're figuring this whole thing out. And I don't know how sound systems work, but I'm not really concerned about how loud you make it for the people that attend your venue. But is there anything you guys can do technology-wise to try to reduce the sound on that eastern property line? And you had mentioned, and I'm just asking that question in general. So I'm trying to find a way to...
Yes, there are things that could be done.
Like what? Educate me on this, and so I understand.
Well, the two specific things that I had offered and suggested in our zoning modification hearing were changing the angles of the speakers and then installing a, you know, as nearly opaque a landscape buffer in the north-east vector and east as possible. The sound consultant that the city hired agreed that... Well, he didn't say anything about the angle of the speakers. That came from someone else, but agreed that that could make a difference.
Since our last meeting that we had, and we had several concerts since then, were those two things done or is that...
No, no. I mean, after y'all reduced the limit further, it is difficult enough to operate there. I have not considered that further.
We did raise the speakers and tilt them down.
Okay. And that has some positive... We did hear some positive effect from that.
I don't know of any complaints those last few concerts.
Okay. So there is still some things that can be done that haven't been done yet that might be able to achieve an objective maybe without the law? I don't know. I'm just trying to figure that out. And that's kind of the question we're talking about.
Just add money.
Of course. You can do anything with enough money, right? So, well, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Anybody else?
Quick question. So Steve, since our last zoning modification meeting, how many complaints have we had in regards to anything?
Since the... I think that was September 23rd. We haven't had any calls for service there. I did receive, I believe I received an email from one of the people we've been communicating with stating that they were able to hear it.
Okay. Thanks.
Stating that what?
That they were able to hear it, hear the music.
I have a question, or actually, council member Cookerly. Did you have any questions or comments before I speak?
My questions were... Ken addressed my questions in the previous segment.
Okay. I have a question for you, Ken. I've heard from a few folks mentioning the Little River farms versus this venue here and having a different decibel level. Can you address that or...
Well, I can't address what may have resulted in the decibel level being different. But I will say this. I mean, the law on conditional uses or special use permits is fairly clear, that they are designed for uses that may not be generally acceptable in a particular zoning district, except in certain locations and with respect to certain specific conditions. And so a cup or a special use permit is by design supposed to be a uniquely tailored land use permission or accommodation based upon the use being proposed, the specific sort of characteristics of the property upon which the use is proposed to be, et cetera. So it wouldn't surprise me if someone was to say, "Well, we got a use permit here that has different decibel or condition characteristics of one here." That would be more of what it would be anticipated, because again, the use permit is supposed to be tailored or designed to the use itself. So a music venue, I could see a lot more focus being made on the decibel level, the decibel limits, as opposed to a true, maybe an indoor event venue. That's really not what is more important. Perhaps parking's more important with respect to a non-music event venue. So all I can tell you is, my experience has been with a use permit, that you're going to see deviations between those permits throughout the jurisdiction, whichever jurisdiction it is. That's my answer.
Is there, obviously, council member Buckley's requiesed. Is there anything else that either of you guys or council member Cookerly have? I'd like to just make a statement. Obviously, Ken has given us and staff direction on what we can and can't do in the future if we, you know, if the council elects to. I do want to thank the venue owner and property owner for, you know, it looks like you guys have been working hard to try to address, you know, and really, it's all boiled down at, you know, the only complaints I've heard is some on the sound and that you guys have worked on that. I'd like to ask you to keep working on that as best as you can, as best you can, so that we limit the inconvenience to neighbors without, you know, harming your business. And again, you know, per Ken, at some point, if it was a real problem, you know, the council could elect to bring it back as a zoning issue. But I'm not sure if there's any direction here or thoughts on that now from council.
So Ken, explain again if... I mean, I would anticipate the applicants to come forth and do anything on themselves. But if the council did decide to go with a zoning issue to make the change, what is that process in perpetu... You know, how does that work exactly? Go through the planning commission, go through... What is that?
Well, the government is vested with the zoning power. The government sets up these rules with respect to what I call property owner or developer-initiated zoning. Of course, that's what people, particularly today, think is what's driving all zoning. That's not historically been the case. Most zoning has actually been a product of planning and been initiated by the government itself. They have to go back a ways to see that. But that's where sort of the origin of it was. So the city always has the ability to initiate its own zoning on a piece of property. Now, it's not that easy, though. And what I mean by that is, it both is and isn't. It's easy to initiate it, but when you're talking about a property owner, particularly a property owner with an existing use, they also have property rights with respect to the use that's already on the property. So we would need to be mindful of that. But your question was, what would be the process? The process would be a city-initiated special use permit modification to the conditions if you intended, wanted to pursue that. And that would just be something the council would have to take formal action on. Can't take it here. It'd need to be on an actual announced agenda. But that would be what would have to occur. And again, that would be something that obviously then the property owner would have an interest in actively participating in that. And that gives all sorts of due process rights. I hope I'm being clear.
Does that essentially force them through the CZIM process?
It depends. Local governments can bypass a lot of that, can in fact avoid some of that requirement. You can't avoid state law. You have to follow the minimum zoning procedures law. But some of the public participation requirements and otherwise, other of those sort of miscellaneous elements you've crafted on by way of your zoning code, they can be avoided. But the notice, public hearing, all of that has to follow state law. And of course, then they would have an appellate right if they're not happy with the result.
Okay. Would it make sense to the council, I guess, as far as this question goes? Obviously, we're asking them, asking to sharpen pencils as far as the noise goes continuously. But should we, should there be an agenda item, you know, mid-season, next season, just to see how they're doing as well and do one more review as far as that goes? Should we do that or...
I would say no. We voted 6-0 twice to support this business. We will get to a point, like any business owner does, you just throw your hands up and just walk away. And I don't think we want to lose it at this point, but I think we need to be proactive about it, kind of like what the mayor said. And just, you know, hopefully y'all can do as best you can, and we'll listen to the residents if, you know, things get crazy out of hand.
And another question. Ken, what... The other question that happened was if Matilda's is no longer in existence, and then someone comes in to replace the business, what happens then? Would be some clarity on that?
Well, the use permit does run with the land. But as I recall the conditions, I seem to recall they were fairly specifically tailored to this sort of a use. So I get, I'm going to get a little bit out of my depth here and speculate. I'm speculating, you wouldn't likely see a replacement use that would come in and do this exact thing. This seems like a very niche use to me.
I think we tied it to...
Okay. And right. So there is a condition. I wasn't just dreaming it. The pre-use permit is tied to Matilda's as the operator. So it was tied down very tightly, in fact. So, I mean, while the use permit may run with the land, they would have to come in for a condition, a zoning, a use permit condition modification. And that would allow the council to basically provide any relief that you wanted to provide at that point.
And that's... That makes sense.
Mr. Mills, I think you have.
Yeah, at the original hearing, there were complaints about what might it be in the future. Maybe it's cute and nice and fuzzy now, but hard rock later, you know, whatever. And I agreed, sitting there in the front row, to make it specific to Matilda's. We have no interest in doing anything but Matilda's. We did ask for a stipulation that said, "Or future owners of the same business in the event that, you know, whatever." But it is specific. And I was just going to comment, if I could, Councilmember Jamison. I'd like to point out, we have never been in violation of the noise ordinance, not once. Talked about complaints, but every test validated that we were in compliance, below, almost always well below. That may be irrelevant if people are upset. That's a different matter. And frankly, it's one we care about. This is not just, "Go pound sand, we're meeting the code, leave us alone." I don't want anybody upset. The Potters don't want anybody upset. I would say we took readings at every concert, and we asked the sound board to reduce the levels a number of times, sometimes seeming too low. And we're really... The Potters are paying attention. I'm paying attention. And as far as a future review, if there were problems, I hope I'd be the first one to know about it. And, you know, I'd want to do something about it. But let's just say I ignored it or didn't know about it. If y'all wanted to review it again, and you asked us to come back for a work session review, we'd come back. I mean, frankly, the notion of a, you know, put your hat in your hand and come back every six months and let us, you know, probe is, you know, a little bit stressful. I'm not sure that's necessary, but we'd come back anytime you asked us to.
Sorry? Anything else? Councilmember Cookerly, do you have anything?
Yeah. Did you call me?
I did. I just asked if you had any more...
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate. I was actually, I was actually going to ask to speak briefly. Well, top of what Curtis said, which I, I think were really good comments, I've been impressed with how articulate the folks from Bream Ridge have been. And I've also been very impressed with how responsive and caring Mary Jane and Mark have been, and Curtis, and trying to fiddle with things to make sure that they can be accommodated in this pursuit. And I'm not trying to preach her, but I feel like this is one of the best of collaborations that you can see in a community. I'm not one to really want to legislate, because I think, you know, there might be a rogue concert and this happens and that happens. And I don't, you know, I don't want to set up for a "gotcha" kind of thing. But ongoing collaboration, I feel very certain when I look at the number of years we have left on the council, that if anything got out of hand, we're not going to let it get abusive. I mean, I have no intention of letting that happen. But I'm seeing a tremendous amount of collaboration between the neighborhood and the Tildas already. I feel like we need to let that play out. I mean, no one in Bream Ridge is shy, and they make good points. We're seeing a lot of progress. But that's just my two cents. As little as we can intervene and people do the right thing is where I am. But if we need to intervene, we'll do it. I mean, I feel passionate that I would.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? And the only thing I would want to say is reiterate all the comments, but also thank you for not only the community getting involved and bringing to our attention where there's an issue, but also the business owner and the Potters and Mr. Mills trying to address those issues. You know, per what Ken says or said, you know, legally at this point, we don't have the ability to change the DB ratings or whatever. What I'm asking for is a, is a working together with the community, because obviously you want, you want the neighbors to promote your business and hopefully some of them will enjoy it versus not be happy. And I also want to make comment, you know, from Ken's point, yes, and Carol said and everybody else, if there was a drastic, if there was a huge problem, we can relook at this. But I, you know, also want to stress, because I've talked to Ken about this before, that's not an easy process, because I don't want any business in Milton to think that, you know, at the whim of just dropping a hat, you're going to come in and, you know, basically shut them down. It's a, there's a lot of legal, you know, onus on us. So I don't want to scare people off with that either. But obviously, we do have that option if it's a major problem. But so if there's nothing else, we'll... I'll ask Sudi to call the next item. And thank you for everybody that's here.
Our next item is presentation of the draft updated Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages and Correlated Additional Permitted Uses in Chapter 64, Zoning. Ms. Sarah Ladark. Ms. Sarah Ladark.
Good evening, Council. I am here today, and I have Sandy Webb. If there are any additional questions, she's the attorney we're working with, with Taylor English-Duma, to rewrite the Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages Ordinance. We're here today, you each should have a nice packet in front of you. That just kind of gives a lot of the verbiage, but we're going to go over some pictures and more big picture things to make sure that this is the direction that council is looking to go in. The purpose of reworking Chapter Four is to help make Milton a place where people with innovative ideas can come and be encouraged and supported in their growth. This rewrite is designed to spur economic development and define what Milton wants to be and attract for the next five years. This project also satisfies two of the Economic Development Department's core values, which are play offense and to challenge the book. So I'm going to start with what, a little background on what we've done so far to engage the community and council in this rewrite. We engaged Taylor English-Duma in August, and then did a brainstorming session with key city staff, developers, and leasing agents. We came to council in September for a work session, and then there was an article in the Milton Herald in September. We had two public input sessions in October. Then we engaged Taylor English-Duma in Phase Two, which was the drafting of the ordinance in October. Then another article in the Milton Herald, and now we're back at a work session. I say all of this and include the Milton Herald, and the two articles are included in your packet to show that the public has been notified of this, and we have received zero negative feedback as of, what time is it right now? Six forty-six tonight. So we're hoping today to clarify the proposed new licenses and uses, and then to be able to present them at CZIM next week, to Planning Commission in December, and then ideally come back to council that first January meeting for first presentation. We will start with craft beer and/or wine markets. And if you follow through the packet of pages, it has all of the verbiage, but we have pretty pictures and the key points on the PowerPoint for council. So a craft beer and wine market, this is Deep Roots located in Roswell. You have to carry a minimum of seventy-five different kinds of beer or wine. Seventy percent of your sales have to come from the beer and wine sales. You can also apply for a sale and/or consumption on premises license. Food sales are not required. Distilled spirits are prohibited. And to make sure this does not turn into a bar, sales stop at ten PM. Any thoughts on that one?
Is that seventy percent gross revenue?
Gross receipts?
I was just, I didn't know if it's seventy percent of like, actual products sold or gross revenue?
I don't know.
That's why I need Bernadette.
Okay, it's probably gross revenue.
Seventy percent of sales.
Okay, sales. The next one we have is a specialty wine market. And this is fermented in Alpharetta. It's an eating establishment no longer than, no larger than two thousand square feet. It's different from the craft market, because you don't have that seventy-five bottle limit that you have to reach. You can have less than that. They do serve food, beer, and wine. Food is thirty percent of gross receipts. Again, distilled spirits are prohibited, sales stop at ten. And because this is an eating establishment that doesn't reach the fifty-fifty limit, they would have to be closed on Sundays. Now, a growler market. This is the Tapet Ponce down at Ponce City Market. So they sell growlers, they can apply for an on-premise license for consumption of beer and/or wine. Food sales are not required, so as long as they do not sell food, they can be open on Sundays. If they enter into the food market and they don't reach that fifty-fifty mark, they will have to be closed on Sundays. No distilled spirits, again, stop sales at ten PM to prevent a bar from popping up. This one is fun. The difference between breweries and distilleries and microbreweries and micro-distilleries. The left, we have Sweetwater Brewery.
We just lost you.
So Sweetwater Brewery is on the left, and my GIS math showed that it was about eight acres, and they produce right around five hundred thousand barrels per year. On the right is Old Fourth Distillery down in Old Fourth Ward. They started out in right around eleven hundred square feet, but they are now in a much larger space, around twenty thousand, and they produce around twenty thousand barrels each year. So my question to council about these, A, if you want them, and then B, the locations where you would see the difference between a brewery and a microbrewery fitting into the city?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll take them.
Hey, we have room for both, depending on your, on your.
I mean, obviously in our commercial court.
Obviously, that's been previous zoned, commercial areas, correct?
Correct. We're not anticipating any, any rezoning to, to, for any of the things that Sarah is discussing today. We have, in our Deerfield corridor, we have, how many?
Roughly two hundred acres of redevelopable land down in that corridor.
And just to clarify that, these would be areas that already are zoned for commercial or restaurants or whatever. So it's not like we're looking to put them out in the middle of, you know, some of our horse farm.
Right, yes. So we're looking at putting these, so I mean, I have to assume that we're not going to permit breweries in downtown Crab Apple. Well, A, I don't think we have eight acres down here, but I would love to see a microbrewery down here.
That'd be fantastic.
I think that'd be awesome, so.
So the intent of all of this is, is to kind of push us to the front edge of this, so we become the attractive market. And so that's what Sarah's been doing, doing all the work on. And the intent of today is to see how you feel about these things, because they are, we already can, from a zoning perspective, do these. It's whether, but we'd have to change our alcohol ordinances, and we're, as we're rewriting these right now, we need to know, kind of get a feel, what you do want to see and what you don't want to see. Bless you. So that's, that's what we're trying, that's what we're hoping to be able to accomplish today. We did a lot of the heavy lifting already. In fact, the, the verbiage to support these already exists in your, in your packet. We just want to see what you, you know, from, from a visionary perspective, what you see as a good fit for the city.
Let's see my next one. Farm wineries. These are already, are currently allowed in the city of Milton. The question we have for council tonight, that we've been approached about, is do we want to allow farm wineries? So right now, they can sell their own wine and wine that is produced in Georgia, but do we want to allow them to sell beer and/or sell wine produced out of state?
Any comments on that?
So is that like, a more of like, an event facility type, people, people going in there?
So going in for a wine tasting.
Okay, on our AG1 property?
Yes, and we have one that exists currently.
I might be more inclined on a use permit on something like that. That's just me, I don't know, I'm just spitballing.
I would say, usually, you know, I mean, we visited this weekend, you know, North Georgia Winery, and, you know, the intent is to have a sort of homegrown, what you produce there. But the problem with wineries, especially in Georgia, you don't have much room or whatever. So most of them do have an option of, of bringing in other wines or other Georgia wines that they have. So I certainly see, you know, with what's allowed now, you know, you get out of state, you know, then you're getting almost like, more of like a packet, you know, go to the store and get that. And beer, I think that's the question, then all of a sudden, it becomes more of an outdoor bar kind of, versus going there as a wine, you know. So I would tend to agree, you know, leaving it the way it is and not, you know, if someone wanted to apply for a use permit and it made sense, we could look at it, but that wouldn't be the norm. Does that make sense?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that was actually Sarah's feeling on it as well. It was nice to see we independently came to that.
Next, oh, this one's pretty fun. So city food markets, courtyard markets, and food halls. They perhaps look similar, but all three of them are very different, and you can find more definitions on page four. But we are going to start with the city food market, which is the, says municipal market. So a city food market is a retail market that doesn't sell gasoline, distilled spirits, tobacco, lottery tickets, those sorts of things. It is open to the public and has food products, including meat, dairy, vegetables, dry goods for sale, and derives less than twenty percent of its gross receipts from the sale of malt beverages and wine. And the second one on here is the courtyard market, which is like the shops at Buckhead. It is a commercial or retail center with one or more structures of continuous tracts or parcels of land. There's an outdoor area used for public and private events, concerts, community events on the plaza, lawn, parks, and the physical boundaries where they want the, to deem the courtyard is where alcohol beverages can be sold and consumed. And the last one is a food hall like Ponce City Market, and that's a retail area of at least two food hall cafes that have prepared meals for consumption on the premises during the entire time that alcohol is sold and that share a large common area.
Yes, in our commercial zones.
Yes, we actually have a eleven hundred square foot food hall that wants to come in.
Sweet.
Yeah, I like, that looks nice.
Okay. A limited service restaurant, we talked about this with switching right now, we require fifty-fifty food to alcohol sales. So switching it to seventy-thirty, so you can have that craft cocktail with that nice bottle of wine with your burger or salad. We're allowed to do that. They would just be prohibited, actually from participating in the brunch bill and being open on Sundays if they stated that seventy-thirty. But that would, they would opt into that.
Here's good to that.
And then just a few random questions as we're working through the entire ordinance that we wanted to get some clarification on tonight. The first one, right now, if you have a bring-your-own-beverage license, and any establishment can apply for that, it doesn't have to be a restaurant. It can be a restaurant, or it can be the place where you go paint with your girlfriends on Friday night. They can get a BYOB license. Right now, it states that it's from nine AM to nine PM, and we would like to change that to nine AM to one hour before closing. Okay. The second one, for beer and/or wine tastings, right now, if distilled spirits are sold at the establishment, they are prohibited from getting a beer and wine tasting license. And we wanted to look into allowing, even if the store sold distilled spirits, they would not be allowed to do distilled spirit, and distilled spirits, that's liquor. They wouldn't be allowed to do tastings of the distilled spirits, but they could still do beer and wine tastings. Did I confuse you?
I got confused on that one.
Sorry.
You can't do shots.
Right, you can't go sample tequila, sorry.
But you, but you can go and do a wine tasting or a craft beer tasting, that kind of thing.
At a liquor store.
I think, yeah, it's almost like downzoning.
And then, number three, extending the licensed premises within the special defined district. This is on page eight. So the way, in the special defined district is our open container district. So we're, we are looking at changing Section D to a licensed premises will be deemed to be within the defined district if the main entrance of the licensed premises is located within the district. So as long as when you walk into the establishment, part of the parcel, or the, the parcel is within the district, if they perhaps extend their establishment past that line, the whole boundaries would be included in open container. And the last one, as we continue to grow as a city, and people who have perhaps been in developments for an established period of time, the developer does Phase Two, Three, Four, Five of the development, and now that establishment wants to move across the way into a newer space. Do we want to allow them to transfer their alcohol licenses across the street? As long as they're in the same development and they still meet all of the distance requirements. But that would save that establishment the hassle of going through the whole process of applying for a consumption on premises or BYOB type license and encourage them to move into newer, hopefully more expensive space.
There's a process we have to check, though. I mean, it's not they just move and don't talk to us.
Oh, right, they have to change their address. We have to make sure they still meet all of our distance requirements, those sorts of things. Yes. That's my presentation for council tonight, if there are any more questions or comments.
My only question, did you have to like, do taste tests or samples? I'm only kidding, kidding. Don't answer. All right, thank you very much. I'm very forward of it. All right, I assume, do we have any more public comment on?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, Sudi, your call next item.
Our last item is discussion of door-to-door solicitation restrictions ordinance. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Commander, members of the council, this evening, I just want to bring to you some proposed modifications to the door-to-door solicitation ordinance. This is a product of a couple of things. Mainly, the city did receive a letter, this is not, only jurisdictions that were receiving these letters, some time ago from a vendor that is their attorney's, that do door-to-door solicitation as one of their primary means of generating business, and they have raised some issues with the city of Milton's ordinance. Of course, we want to look at those, we want to take anything that is raised of that nature seriously. Obviously, we want our ordinances and codes to be consistent with the laws we understand it to be. And of course, we also don't want to miss an opportunity that if we are going to open up a code to take a look at it, maybe add some additional things to make it better as well. And so that's what we're going to do. We've communicated with city staff and sort of told them our concerns. I don't recall if an email has gone to the council. I'm not going to get way deep into the law this evening, but I will just say this. With respect to the solicitation ordinance, there were a few areas that we believe we need to be mindful of with respect to the existing state of the law. The primary one was a mandatory fingerprinting requirement with respect to a solicitation or door-to-door permit. And we were also had at least some concerns about a curfew with respect to when this activity could, could be engaged in. And so we want to give you some options with respect to that. I hope each of you have a document at your stations that hopefully has some blue language on it. The blue is the changes from the code as it presently exists. Let me say very succinctly that when you see a definition, for instance, of a handbill, or you see a definition of moral turpitude, or you see a definition of solicitor at the bottom, that is all stuff that we are recommending just to make our code a little better. It's not the product of anybody raising a concern with it. It's a product of, if we're going to open it up, let's add a few more elements candidly to make it stronger and more enforcement, from a, more enforceable from a regulatory perspective. So let me just walk you through what we are recommending. Obviously, we are recommending that we put in a definition of handbills. We've had jurisdictions that we work in, individuals say, well, I don't go and knock on the door and actually try to consummate a sale at the door, but I do knock on the door and I hand them something. And so that's different, and a lot of, under some traditional definitions of solicitation, that would be sort of a, an exception. We want to, we want to, we want to lock that down to make sure we're covering that as well. I don't have to tell the council that in the days of Ring and some of these porch devices that will communicate to you on your cellphone, people are more attuned and perhaps sensitive to people entering sort of that very sort of special space around your home than ever before in the history of the world, candidly, and know when it happens in a way that, that has never occurred before. People now have video streams showing that there are individuals at my door, and that has raised a lot of, of concerns for a variety of people. A lot of times, the elderly particularly are concerned about individuals that, that come up to their porch and begin to ring on their, their doorbell, et cetera. And so, you know, I've talked with the city manager, and he's made clear that, that we obviously want to take that very seriously as well. While there are constitutional rights of individuals to engage in trade, people also have a right to be let alone at their homes when they want to be let alone at their homes. And so we've tried to produce an ordinance that, that sort of captures both. So we did add some definitions of handbill, moral turpitude. We add a more enhanced definition of what a solicitor is. Another issue that we, that was raised to us was the fee that we charge. The, the city of Milton fee that we charge for a solicitation application, well, the application, the actual processing application itself that leads to a permit, is a hundred and ninety-five dollars for a six-month permit. Not going to say that's high, I'm not. I'm just going to say that, that I want to work with your staff, and I'll do that. I don't know that Steve and I have discussed this exactly, but to make sure we can justify that. The, the way it works is, is that a fee has to equate to the regulatory cost of the service delivery, of the service delivered. If it's more than that, it's a, it's an income-raising device, which is a tax. So we need to make sure that is in fact a fee. And so I'm not suggesting there's the least bit wrong with that, with that fee. I just want to work with the city to make sure that if we get called on it, we can in fact justify it. That's all I'm, that's the. That's all, that's the extent of my analysis with respect to that. Continuing to go through, you'll see on the second page that we added some language that basically talks about the application and we made note that it is a cost for investigation and regulation under the article. Again, trying to link up the fee and the permit application process with the City of Milton's regulatory and investigatory functions. Turning to the next page, you'll see on sub C, about maybe three quarters of the page down, there was a reference to fingerprints. We've taken that out. I, I don't think we need to have a fingerprint requirement. I think as long as we can run a background check, I think we're fine on that. I think that's preferable. And I think that most of the places where the fingerprint requirement has existed has been challenged, a lot of courts have found that's a little bit too far just so people can engage in that activity.
Ken, I've got to debate you on this one, sorry.
All right.
And I apologize. I, my problem, and I'm the one that, that changed this when I was the police chief here, a background check is not, it's only as good as the name you're receiving if you're not, if you're not, if you're not doing fingerprints. So we were approving these, these applications and others like it with, with basic checks into databases that we may have access to. It's so easy to get, to get good fake ID these days. It's, I don't believe that we're doing an adequate job of, of doing background checks. And, and my concern, and I know the chief shares this concern with me, is that these door-to-door sales, while most of the time are legitimate sales, especially at the national level, sometimes these are fronts for burglary rings. And we've both experienced those. That's not just urban legend. We've both dealt with those in our previous jurisdictions. And I'm uncomfortable allowing, stating we have done background checks for people. If they're coming from Idaho, we're not doing any background checks for those people because they're not going to be in our local databases. So that's my concern with that. If it's constitutionally unlawful, then I guess I lose. But short of that, I'm a little concerned with it.
Question, if you're going to, I mean, and I'm fine with, but if you're going to rob a house, why would you come in here and give y'all a fingerprint anyway?
So what?
Just curious.
Because this provides a legitimate opportunity to be knocking on someone's door. So if you, if you're a magazine salesperson, and that was the ring that we had going on, and you're knocking on a door, you knock on the door, no one comes to the door, maybe you go to the side door, you knock on the door, no one comes to the door, you don't see a dog barking, you don't, you don't see cameras, but someone approaches you, well, I have a legitimate reason to be there. I'm with ABC Magazine Company, I'm trying to sell magazines, here's my City of Milton permit. Whereas you take that to the next step, I now have that permit, I am, I have now gotten to the front door and seen that nobody's home, I see no surveillance equipment, I see no evidence of large dogs, I go to the side door now, I see nothing, the next step is just to kick in the door. And that, I'm not saying that's what you see all the time. I'm not saying that everybody out there doing door-to-door sales is, in fact, I'm sure the lion's share of people are out there just trying to, to run a legitimate business. But from a protection standpoint, I get concerned that we're giving license, almost license, for people to get into that inner sanctum.
Got it.
And then state why they have a legitimate reason to be there. That's my, so going back to the, the ordinance you, we all just passed, that we wrote up, you passed for the getting in the fence line, that would give someone a legitimate reason to get on your property and not be liable under that, that new disorderly conduct statute because they're, they're there to sell magazines, they have a legitimate reason to be there. I just, it just concerns me. I'm not saying we would, we would stop it, though I have to be honest with you, I never approved these permits because they, I was the gatekeeper of that in my old city, never approved them. We have to do what we have to do here. I understand Ken's got a job to do to protect this city from liability. I completely understand. But what I'm really looking for is I'm looking for the most stringent law we can to protect our citizens without, of course, putting us into, into a constitutional.
Well, I mean, the, you know, that's interesting. The most restrictive ordinance that exists may be the one that is only decided that that exists after a court deciding that that's what will be allowed. I mean, you know, what, what is lawful, a lot of times is only determined after a court of record reviews what, what's going to be lawful. And, and so, I mean, but that's, listen, this is a work session. That's exactly the, the debate this is supposed to facilitate. It's not the first time in the history of government that the lawyer and the, the day-to-day operator of the city may have a difference of opinion. And that's, that's, that's healthy, actually. That's, and that's part of the robustness of, of the debate. Absolutely.
Are you saying that the city manager was right?
Absolutely not. But I'm saying that I will defend that the death is right to be wrong.
The document as well, we have some exceptions with regards to nonprofits and things like that as well. So, and, and so Steve, your point, what's to stop someone from pretending to be a nonprofit and not be fingerprinted at all or no permit at all?
So there, there are, there are laws that protect certain entities. I believe there are, there are federal laws that protect veterans from, from certain permit requirements. The not-for-profits, it would be somewhat easy enough for us to be able to, unless they, they have fabricated all of the documentation showing them as a not-for-profit, that would be discovered at the time when they come in for the permit. Nothing's foolproof. People that, they, there are, there are illegitimate passports people travel from country to country with. I just want to try to harden the target as much as possible.
Well, and this, maybe you misunderstand this, and so the section 36-39, Division Two permit says the exception, it is not meant to regulate solicitation for charitable, political or other nonprofit purposes. Does that mean they don't have to come in for a permit or do they still have to come in for a permit but don't have to pay the fee?
It doesn't regulate them, that's.
Yeah, so they can just, they can just start walking around and pretending one way or another, right?
They could.
So essentially. Okay, that was just one question. The next question, though, is on that thing I just mentioned, 36-39B1. It mentions people walking around for political things and yet it's, political is not mentioned as a, one of the exceptions since the definition of solicitor on the first page, Division One generally. So what about people that are campaigning? Do they need permits or no?
They don't. I'm not, I'm not even referring to the code.
It's not, it is not intended to regulate solicitation for political purposes.
Okay.
So let me, let me offer up this. I mean, this, this is a debate that's actually ongoing, not just in Milton, but other jurisdictions.
And I know, and I'm hearing some feedback, but, and I think the point is it's a fine line you got to walk because if you regulate it and approve it, then you're kind of giving somebody a license to, you know, to, you know, whether if we, if it was extended to political or, you know, nonprofit and whatnot. So I think, yeah, you have to be careful because then someone could use, definitely use it.
Well, that's right.
A bad person could use it against city and all that. Gives them more cover.
Right, right. One of, one of the issues we've gotten into as well is the notion of, of even if you've got a permit, if, if someone places notification on their property that says no solicitation, this ordinance and every ordinance that I'm aware of recognizes that as, I don't care whether you have a permit or not. I have, as the property owner indicated, that, that I don't want to receive any solicitation in, in, on my property. And that needs to be honored. And candidly, I mean, you get, we're seeing now communities that are developing kind of en masse, not as a governmental level, but at a private level, very attractive no soliciting signs because this is becoming a bigger issue. People just want, you know, don't even, don't even come on my property, please. This is my safe space. I don't really want to be, to be in any way confronted on this. So just, that's, that's a way of also addressing this, but it's not really a governmental way. We'll, we'll recognize that. But really, that's the private property owner speaking as the owner and protector of their own property. Let me, let me finish. We, we may need to discuss more the fingerprinting issue. You've heard my recommendation, you've heard the city manager's very reasonable response, but I do think we, we at least need to think about that. My hope is, is you give me the go-ahead to, to begin to bring this forward as a, as a code modification and, and the city manager and I will, will leg wrestle later and see who wins on that one issue. And he'll probably win. We did add some additional language, beefing up the process, just a little more exactness with respect to what can be anticipated so it's not, there's no critical path. If someone comes in and completes all the boxes, checks all the marks, they will in fact receive a permit if they in fact qualify for a permit. And we've included some language that talks about even those things that would be disqualifying with respect to past criminal record, et cetera, to add more language to that. We've also added a appeal procedure with respect to individuals that seek the permits that are denied one, if in fact they believe that they have been inappropriately denied a request. On the second to last page, you'll see some language under the creating nuisance language that says, no person shall enter a home without the express invitation of the occupant or owner. And if a no soliciting sign is posted, no solicitation should occur. And that, again, that will be under our code and that would simply be an enforceable act by the city based upon notice. You know, this, this is, this is just the law. If you, and it's not accidental that if you see a pasture and it says no trespassing, that's, the reason is, there's, there's a legal reason for that is because if it is posted, that means that entering is not just a civil trespass, but can in fact be a criminal trespass. So that's why the posting occurs and that's what we're suggesting in the ordinance. And again, that's a right that all property owners enjoy. That's nothing we're creating out of thin air. We're simply recognizing the right as it exists. And finally, we have taken out the curfew provisions. Now I want to focus on that for a second. The, the curfew provisions are tricky because on the one hand, I certainly can understand that individuals don't want to have folks knocking on the door at 11 o'clock at night if it's not October 31st, or maybe if even it is October 31st, they don't want that. And I get that. On the other hand, we have seen some law that suggests that has been very heavily scrutinized by a court. What I might recommend is in lieu of the language we have in here now, that we, that we in fact do add some curfew language or keep some curfew language, but just keep it very, very simple. Solicitation shall occur no earlier than 9:00 AM and no later than 30 minutes after sunset. And sunset actually is an identifiable time, depending upon the day of the year that is. That is actually the language that the entity that has written this with some of the concerns has recommended. I'm comfortable with it because I'm a little hesitant to take away the curfew altogether because I do think there are some really good public policy reasons that no one with a permit that has the word Milton anywhere on it should be at your door at 10 o'clock at night saying, I want to talk to you. So that makes a lot of sense to me as well. Those are my recommendations, other than the fingerprinting, which I think that the city manager and I need to speak on some more. Is the council comfortable with me moving forward with these modifications?
You guys good?
Yeah. But I want to see the leg wrestling, though.
Chief, you, you know, I asked the chief to be here tonight for this. Are you comfortable with, the chief and I have spoke, have spoken at length about this and I don't mean to be taking your role on here because it's not my role. Do you, you have any feelings on this?
Very comfortable with keeping an ordinance in place. When our officers go out on calls, it gives them some leverage to investigate a little bit more to ensure that, that folks are out there for legitimate business and not there to victimize our citizens. Getting back to the protocols, it kind of tightens the net. So if we get folks that come in here and they see they're going to get fingerprinted and, and a background investigation and have to show some identification, typically, I would say they'll go to the next jurisdiction that's not quite as stringent. So we, my concern is that we become that weak link. So I think if we come up with something that's both fair, but still keeps in place, a good vetting process, I'm very much for that.
Good. Could you give us your?
May I give you one point of clarification? Nonprofits, we will process at no fee for them, but they, they can receive a permit. I think there was a bit of confusion on that. And one thing that I've noticed too is that we'll need to shore up the application with the, whatever changes that we make. There are some, I won't say it's wrong, but there are some gray areas in there I think we should shore up as well.
You mean like in the actual documentation itself?
The documentation and the application.
Application form.
Yeah, the application forms. We'll need to, we'll need to match up with that.
Revisiting of that, but that's something internal, we can do internally.
Yeah, but that, that was the only thing I noticed. But I'm very much for, for keeping something in place to help us vet these folks and it helps our officers out in the field because we will get a barrage of calls on these. It can really make our day very busy. And if, also being able to tell citizens there is a vetting process and if they have an identification card, we know there, we've at least had an opportunity to explore what they're doing. And that can at least reduce their anxiety and fear about who just came to their door. And that's very helpful to our citizens.
Okay. Chief, would you mind sharing your opinion on the disagreement between the city manager and? I'm kidding, don't say anything.
Take whoever wins the leg race a lot.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Also, before we adjourn, I don't know, everybody's left, but we're selling camera. I want to just recognize both Judy Birds and Paul Moore here tonight. And as we all know, they have both, I want to commend them on both, on a, you know, well-run respectable campaigns. I think we all up here know everything you go through and obviously sometimes you're successful, sometimes you're not, but I think you both were successful and, and got a good message out there and met a lot of people. And again, overall, the city's better for it and we, we hear, you know, we hear different perspectives. So want to thank you both for stepping up there and doing that. So, all right, if nothing else, we'll adjourn.